I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Richard? Here. Juanita?
Yeah.
Adrian? Ernie?
Here.
Adrian will be in just a couple minutes later. Approval of minutes from, oh, I'm sorry, we're actually going into the public hearing portion, I thought this. Public hearing for Prop. 11/2018, opt-in to the Local Elections Act. The city of New Mexico has changed their election laws and opting into the new law will transfer a majority of the duties of the local municipal elections to the county clerk. Opting out will allow us to retain the duties of managing local municipal elections. And Dennis, have you any thoughts on it?
Yeah, basically what they did was, Chapter 8 of our state statute is what gave statutory authority for locals municipalities to give elections. They've done away with that, it's completely gone. So now what they're doing is they're consolidating all of the elections together on what's called Election Day. Everybody generally knows that even number of years we have elections on the first Tuesday of November. This will allow us to have elections every first Tuesday of November. So municipal elections, school board elections, and soil conservation, and any other public entities that want to join in. They'll have their elections on odd number of years, and then state, county, federal elections will be on even number of years. What this means is we'll have our elections on November, the first Tuesday of November, and the elected officers will take effect on January 1st. Which is kind of odd, who wants to take office on the first day of New Year's, but that's just the way it lays. If we opt into this, and we have the option, if we opt into the Local Elections Act, then they take over our elections and we're all good. If we opt out, then we still manage our elections on the same day. It's still unclear whether we have, how much support we'll get, have or lose based on that, but from the looks of it, most municipalities aren't actually opting in. It eases tensions for me because I'm in the office, I'm dealing with the public all the time, I mean, it's in a new a budget season. And unlike county clerks, I'm in charge of a lot of different things, whereas the county clerk, they just focus on elections and public records, and their duties are small. I'll go broad in terms of the quantity of duties, but how spread out they are is not as broad as how I'm spread out.
Let me explain why I think it's a good idea to opt in. So we lose, we actually lose a couple months, so instead of taking office in March, we would take office in January. So those of us that are up in March of 2020, that's Adrian and Ernie, you guys would actually be up in November of 2019, which is next year. So the reason why I think it's good is it actually puts all the elections together at the same time that school board, us, and the soil conservation, and eventually, I'm hoping, the Central New Mexico Electoral Co-op, that would be like the greatest thing ever, but they have not opted in yet. So the reason why that's good is, number one, it's easier for people, number two, it's greater turnout for all. So if 400 people show up to the municipal election and only 200 show up to the school board election, now you're showing up to the municipal election and you've got the school board on there. So obviously turnout's going to be greater for like those lower elections that are getting out there. So that's going to be better, I think. The fact that the county clerk takes over, like I said, like he said, it takes away from, you know, it helps him, maybe it's pressure off of him. The county takes over. Eventually, the county, the Lindas are talking about going to like printer ballots. So basically, when you go to vote in the future, hopefully soon, you will go, you will tell them, you know, you give them your name, they will print your ballot right there. They're going to have a printer and they print your ballot. What this does is this actually increases, it actually helps greatly because like, for instance, it helps with the, how do I explain that? More polls, more early voting, yeah, more things. So someone from Moriarty, if they're passing through Mountain Air on Election Day, they can go to Mountain Air. Because they basically are passing through, they stop, they say, I need to vote, and they print their ballot for Moriarty in Mountain Air. So it changes like the dynamic of the whole entire election, it helps it, it makes it easier for everybody. So I'm thinking if we eventually do this, then eventually what's going to happen is they're going to go to the printer ballots, and people can vote, let's say, I mean, let's say someone's in Moriarty and they need to vote in the municipal election for Moriarty, they could do it here, vice versa. We could eventually vote in Moriarty, if we're there all day at a conference or something, we can go vote for lunch for the Mountain Air election. So I think this is a great thing, we do, you know, you do lose a couple of months of office, I don't think that, you know, but anyways. And what else did you want to explain?
Well, the cost of it.
Okay.
We spend thousands every two years on elections because of these printed ballots, rather than have it print on demand. I have to order, like this last election, I had no idea what to expect and didn't want to run out. So I ordered 600 ballots and I threw 300 of them away. So that's a cost associated with that. So it's, we're talking, I want to save $2,000 to $3,000 for this last election that we had. What this does is we will pay the county clerk $250 a year, just straight up pay them. Now, the drawback of that is we don't get early voting, and I spoke with the Lindas about that last week, and she was unfamiliar with that part of it. A lot of this is still ambiguous due to the county clerks and a lot of people. So they're still fleshing out the kinks, but right now, I believe it's going to be a negotiation between us and the Lindas to have them, do we pay them for the early voting, the workers, or do they?
Yeah, and I believe we do get early voting, it's just not here, you would have to go to the county clerk's office. So that's what he means by you don't get early voting. So you get early voting, it's just not in the municipal.
Yeah, but we would, if we paid, I believe we would get early voting here.
Right, right.
Because we pay each poll worker. I believe it's 200 bucks. In our municipality, I was the early voter, voting manager, so they come in and I managed it. But with the county, the state statute read that you can only pay poll workers 200 dollars. So that's either one day, and I'm not sure if that, I did really look into the two-week-long part of the voting session, but I'm presuming it may have been an early voting session as well, which isn't a lot paid. But that's a question that we'll have to ask her, the Lindas. And yet, they are going to print on, it's not even so much eventual, I believe they have to go with this, like with this particular election season, they have to switch over to print on demand. I think, but don't quote me that. I worked elections last week with the Lindas, that's where I came in.
That's exactly the money, I mean, just on paper alone, like you said, you throw away ballots, just as many prints as you go, so.
How about absentee?
Absentee will be the standard. I believe you would mail your request to the county clerk, your application, she would send you the application, then you send it back, your application, then she would mail you the ballot. It's the exact same process, but rather than coming through town, you'd go directly to the county clerk.
This helps. The only thing that I think would make the perfect is if the co-op went, because I think the elections are so many left.
Would you describe that more, like what's the possible way that it happens?
So when we, we actually, me and Juanita, Councilwoman Juanita went to, the guy that was sponsoring this bill, De Soto, yeah. He was at Inesante and we went to a presentation of his. And I actually got involved because as, I don't know if you knew where, I do not like the elections for the co-op. So I brought it up to him and he said that he was trying to get them on board, and that they might have to go through the PRC to actually make that happen. So obviously, they're not going to automatically just say, we're in, as we would all hope, but maybe through another revenue, another source they can make that happen. Just so I clarify why I hate the co-op election so much is because it's in one location for a three-hour period, and it makes zero sense. If it's in Corona, everybody from here all the way up to wherever the co-op ends, they'll know it has to go to Corona. It's absolutely ridiculous. And you have to have a certain amount, and it's just, it's so, I call it rigged, I shouldn't call it rigged, but it's so bad.
They benefit from that.
They benefit from that, because there's no, they have no one to worry about. I mean, people aren't going to show up, people aren't going to get up on a Saturday morning.
So I wonder why they would be willing to change.
They, I don't think they would. No, they're not, yeah. They would not, yeah. But if they did this, wow, I think things would be better. Any questions, comments, concerns?
And that individual that was over there, that we went to this, has he gone before their board and took this at them?
Who?
The individual that was over there in the stands for the workshops that we went, has he approached him at one of their?
Oh, the co-op, I don't know what he's done, I think he's, I don't know how he's done it.
He was at the clerk institute, so I don't know if he did.
I know he's aware of it, so I think he'll work that bit.
Does this stand out on your side?
Any other questions? Comments? Questions? Do we have a motion to adjourn from the public hearing?
Make a motion to adjourn from the public hearing?
A second. All right, I have a motion to adjourn from the public hearing, this is by Richard, a second by Ernie. Roll call, Richard?
Four.
Juanita?
Four.
Ernie?
Four.
All right, we are now adjourned from the public hearing. All right, and we're going to call the committee's order, this is the actual town council meeting, we have a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Richard?
Here.
Juanita?
Here.
Richard? Ernie?
Here.
Roll call, minutes from regular meeting held on October 16th? That'll change spots after.
I made the motion, we have the regular meeting held on October 16th?
A second. I have a motion by Juanita to approve minutes from regular meeting held on October 16th, a second by Ernie, roll call, Richard?
Four.
Juanita?
Four.
Ernie? Four.
Motion passes. Approval of tonight's agenda for November 13th, 2018, regular meeting.
I made a motion for group agenda for November 13th, regular meeting. Check in.
Okay, I have a motion by Ernie to approve tonight's agenda, a second by Richard, roll call, Richard?
Four.
Juanita?
Four.
Ernie?
Four.
Motion passed. All right, Ernie, a motion by Richard, a second. Approval of vouchers. Now, she, we're almost done in the police front, correct?
As far as construction and so forth? Yeah, I think all we have is just monitors. Well, we're good. All right, guys.
Any questions?
Make a motion for approval of the voucher dish.
I second that motion.
All right, I have a motion by Richard to approve the voucher list, a second by Juanita. Roll call, Richard?
Four.
Juanita?
Four.
Richard?
Four.
Ernie?
Four.
Voucher's approved. All right, approved, so we just have the public hearing on the Local Elections Act. This is the approval of ordinance 11/2018, opt-in to the Local Elections Act. Adrian, you were not here, I'll leak you in real quick. So if we opt in, basically the county takes over local elections. Local elections basically become one election, so no more school board election, town election, soil conservation election, it's all one. It's at even number, the first Tuesday of November of odd number of years. So we would basically have an election every year on the first Tuesday of November. We would have the state and federal and all that on the even number of years, and then local on the odd number of years. What that does for you is you're actually up for election in 2020, instead of your election being in March of 2020, it would be in November of 2019, which is next year. And you would, if you win reelection, you would take over in January 1st of 2020. So you actually lose about two months' time. The reason why it's good is because it increases voter turnout, so basically if you have like 400 people coming to the municipal election, and only 200 to the school board election, obviously the school board gains some votes on that because they will be here already for the local elections. Do you have any other questions?
Was all of it, have you done like cards and everything like that, make?
No, 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 no.
I was just kind of curious, I was getting people talk, so I was just, I can't be a delegate with that, with every employee, and if you, if you do so much now.
No, they're just typically taking over and consolidating into one, which would be in November of an odd number of years. And like I was also mentioning, it helps because eventually they're going to go to printed ballots. So basically, you go and give your name and they print your ballot right there. So for instance, if they go to that, we could like, if you have a workshop in Moriarty that day and you want to go in the municipal election, they can print you because you're in that county. So as long as you're in the county, you can vote for your municipal election. So it actually is a benefit for a lot of people.
Still going to be like a four-year term?
Then, yeah, everything would remain the same, the only thing is, and everybody loses, everybody loses that time period because them too would do it this time, but when we're up for election, instead of our election being in March, we would also lose that. So we would be up in November and then take office in January. So it's really no, you know, I mean, it's not like the first time they move it anymore, it's not.
I believe the additional benefit of that is that transition period, after you, mayor-elect or councilperson-elect, you have that time of November and December to come in, speak with the staff, get a kind of abreast of what's the situation, and the state of the municipality, you would say. And then when you start on January 1st, you'd be armed with a lot of information, and you had it heard.
That is very true. Okay, so this is the approval of that ordinance. It has to be majority vote by governing body, which means at least three council members have to vote yes. I cannot be a tiebreaker in this particular contest.
Against! Everybody's too serious. You made a vote?
Who's that?
Yeah, who? I was calling.
You made a motion?
Okay, I made a motion. To vote on the opt-in for the Local Elections Act. Approval of ordinance, what is it, 11/2018? Okay. Check in.
Okay, I have an approval, a motion in court to approve the ordinance 11/2018, opt-in to Local Elections Act by Ernie, a second by Richard, roll call, Richard?
Four.
Juanita?
Four.
Richard?
Four.
Ernie?
Four.
A lot of them see. Alcohol permit for event by Friends of Salinas Purple Missions.
Passed!
Mayor, members of the council have considered this request.
If you could, Paul, please.
Sure.
Thank you.
Do you want to wear his phone?
Yeah, yeah, it's the official document.
I'll try not to blast your ears off. Sounds good? Thank you. The Friends of Salinas Purple Missions is a relatively new group. We were incorporated one year ago this month, and we received our 501(c)(3) status in January this year. So we haven't been around very long. Our sole purpose, as you can tell from May, is to assist Salinas Purple Missions National Department. And if you haven't seen this list before, there are five parts of their mission, that is education, interpretation, preservation, protection, and recreation. Again, our sole purpose is to assist Salinas Purple Missions. Our very next event is going to be a symposium on December 8th, and it will be held at the Montana Mountain Art Council Building on February 7th. This symposium is going to be showing off to the public for the very first time a fossil that was found at one of the Salinas sites. And we have two goals for the symposium. The first will be to educate the public about this fossil, and then the second will be to raise funds so that we can build a permanent display case. Right now, the fossil is locked away in a vault, basically, at Salinas headquarters, and very few people have seen it. So we want to build a permanent display case so that it can be accessible to the public at all times. So the supposing, again, it has two goals, education and fundraising. As a feature of the symposium, we'd like to offer wine for sale by Morales Wines, and that would be accompanied food that will, members of the Friends of Salinas will be offering to the public. If you have to take any questions.
I don't see why the team's not going to be there. What was her, what's she saying?
They're too far away.
So who's doing the security, the town, the town leaders provide the security?
We will have licensed law enforcement, so we don't have a contract yet, but we have been talking about that, so that's coming along.
So why are you going to?
Yes, I sent a memo to the mayor and the town council regarding, I have a meeting, which you're coming. And it was discussed that based on the event, rather than take the patrol officers out of their normal patrol duties, that would be considered an overtime event. So any security from 4 o'clock to 7, since they're going to have a line there, that we use one of our officers who's going to be off duty and reason for that event, thus, in fact, that their organization would reimburse the town for any overtime. And that's normally high, in most other cities, when they have events, they hire the officers, and it runs through the town, the town pays the officer their overtime, time and a half, and then but then the organization reimburses that. All that information goes forward to the mayor and the town council.
And he would be a deputy uniform, right? He would be like a police officer?
Yes, sir. And he would provide security because of the fact of the fossil, and then also case other people that don't, are not part of the show, and they're just going to be in line, and it would be for that, that, a couple of dollars.
Is there any, been any issues with the, any, I don't think so.
If any of you attended one of the events of the MMHC Center during Stoneflower Festival, Morales Wines was there at that event. So they've been to our town before, nice people, they like to come here.
What are the hours of this?
It'll be 4 to 7, and wine sales will be cut off at 6:45.
I made a motion to approve the permit for the event by the Friends of Salinas Purple Missions. Please.
I second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the alcohol permit by Adrian, a second by Juanita, roll call, Richard?
Four.
Juanita?
Four.
Richard?
Four.
Ernie?
Four.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you so much. Approval to advertise for animal control officer and code enforcement officer. Kenneth Aguilar, recently terminated his resignation as ACO, CDO, Chief Code Enforcement Officer, effective January 1st, 2019, or upon the hiring of an ACO. So I'm seeking council approval to put the position out. Put a position, so everyone can be a candidate now.
Yeah, simple, I'll make a motion to approve to advertise for animal control officer, stats code enforcement officer. Check in.
Yeah, I have a motion by Ernie to approve, a second by Richard, roll call, Richard?
Four.
Juanita?
Four.
Adrian?
Four.
Ernie?
Four.
I'll pass that, bro.
Huh?
I'll pass that, yeah. I'll put it out to the line.
Have you already had an interest in it?
Yeah, we actually handed out an application today, and because the room, they already run out, but I told them, don't turn it in till after the town council approves it. And I believe another individual put in an application, or we'll be giving applications.
Oh, wow, okay. So his resignation, the detainer, doesn't necessarily have to go to January if you guys decide, if the council decides to hire someone?
Correct.
Yeah, and I believe we were discussing that we would like at least a one-week training period for him. And so perhaps whenever we do do the hire, we do it as a motion as the council, that you stay on one week or two weeks, or whatever you guys wish, as a training period, a transition period.
I spoke to Mr. Aguilar about that, and he is more than willing to provide that training while I'm still employed. And then also I would contact the ACO county, where they would provide OJT for the individual coming in, and also training on the act, which is the training that Mr. Aguilar went to. I've got a good response from the organization, where they want to provide training here in Mountain Air. They want to bring training here, the ACO train, which is one week long. It's going to generate a lot of money for the local businesses, and all I got to do is give them dates. They're looking at January of this year coming up. It's a pretty big organization, they provide not only the basics, they provide also the advanced stuff for the animal control. So if we can bring in this school, pull in the center here, they'll be part of these 30 people. And what they'll do is they'll do all the advertising, they'll do all the events and all that, and we get two free seats for every 10 individuals that they bring in. So we get the free training for our new ACO, if anybody in the council or anybody would like, members of the shelter, like our volunteers, would like to go and see what this is all about.
The benefit of this, this is a nationwide organization, and we looked at the roster or the schedule, and there's nothing in New Mexico coming up. We're even relatively close, anytime, I believe that Houston was a close.
Houston was a close.
So by bringing them to Mountain Air, it's a double whammy, we can get the economic benefits of the hospitality industries coming in here. If we could even finagle a deal with them, where they offer a little bit of discount for hotel rooms, that's even a little bit of a perk to attract them here. And then we can train officers for free.
For free.
And then we provide a benefit to New Mexico, because we get a regional draw.
What's the 30 people required to?
They, on this type of class, they require a minimum of 30, no less than 15.
Is there any 30 people that want to go attend?
No, it's for ACOs throughout the state that are, you guys.
For originally.
And they, this is the basic training for them, this is the basic certification that they need, and all counties require, and cities.
So we could get people from Roswell.
Oh, yeah, they'll be people from all of the states.
How? I was lost on that one.
Yeah.
I was like, we're going to get enough people all over town, where you're going to go in?
Yeah.
You was a lot, you're going to be the first one there.
Bring in somebody here.
And then you figure most of those places are going to pay for them to stay at a hotel.
Oh, yeah, they're going to give them the, we can bring it here, we can make this center, but you really think about it, we are centered. Everybody come in, everybody come in from Cruz to Roswell. This is the center.
Right.
And Albuquerque is only an hour away. So we have everything here to provide them. Logic, restaurants, the training. They don't have to go anywhere else and spend their money.
They're, they're training animal control officers and code enforcement officers?
No, it's.
No, they're animal.
It's just animal. But I was gonna make a comment on that. Uh, the reason why we sent Aguilar to this one is because there's like three or four of the classes was specific for animal control. The rest of it is on enforcement in general. So this is, I consider this is, uh, kinda like law, like the law enforcement academy light edition. That a light edition gives them exposure whether they wanna be in this field and how to operate as a law enforcement officer.
I ask because we've got, we've gotten the network with a lot of mayors and council people from all over the state with an MOLI program. And if I could pass on information to them for the, for their municipalities, maybe they can send people down here that'd be willing to do that, knowing that this organization doesn't come to New Mexico or anywhere close, like you guys said.
They only come once a year.
Okay, we all need so.
Yeah. It would be good. It would give us recognition and bring in, uh, revenue.
In a way, it's free advertising because it's, because we get it through fax. That's how I find out about it. The fax machine. And, um, just imagine like the, the main mountain air going out to every single fax machine in every municipality, west, southwest. Where's mountain air? They'll look that up and.
That's where it is.
Yeah. So it's kind of like a promotion in itself, just a promoter name.
Yeah, and they, and it's advertised nationwide by them. They do all the advertising on this.
I don't wanna throw a wrench in this, but you know how many police officers we send to train you?
And they promise to stay here and adios, goodbye.
What, is there anything that we're gonna help this code enforcement, this animal control accountable after we send it to this training? Okay, they get their little certificates. We don't pay them enough and they go to all this place. Is there anything that they're gonna be held accountable for?
Well, the applicants that I am aware of that have applied already for ACO are all from mountain air. They're all from here.
But it's.
That's not a good argument. And here's why.
That's not a good argument. I've been here since, I don't wanna throw it. I've been here since the year two thousand. Thirty people have come here before. Well, me, because they weren't here. And say, we own the home, we got a family here. This is the town that I was born and raised. What happens once we send them to the academy? Yes, you told me, told us, we don't pay for it, but we pay their, their, uh, their room or whatever to their salary, their insurance and everything. They get certified, they go to Valencia County, they go to Villanero County, they go to wherever. They sit here right before us in our interview process and say, we're born and raised here. How many of born and raised people have I seen out there that we sent to the academy? Right now, without mentioning no name, I can mention three in the years that I've been here. I wanna, my question needs to be answered. How are we gonna help these people accountable?
The way we can do that, council, is the, the same way that I propose for the uncertified officers, is by making them sign a contract. Not, you can't force them to stay, but we can ask them to sign a contract that they're gonna remain with this agency for at least two years. If they leave the agency within that two year period, they would have to reimburse us for any training that we pay for. I.e., if we said, we're getting this training, we bring this free training here, we're not paying anything. But if we say we, if we had to, it was nine hundred something dollars, I think it was. By them signing this contract, they're saying, okay, I'm from mountain air, I'm gonna stay with you guys. And then a year later, they say, you know what? I got my training, I wanna go to Albuquerque, for instance. Okay, well, you remember the contract you signed when you got hired? You have to reimburse us for that training because that training is part of your job. That's the only thing we can hold accountable for civilly. But we can't force an actual individual to stay for two years. So that's how we reimburse and recoup that. Is that within that one year's time, if an individual stays with us for at least a year, fourteen months at the max, we've already recouped that money that we already spent through his, through his or her efforts of doing their job. The law enforcement academy, on the other hand, that training is mandated by state law and it's free. So yes, we do have to pay the benefit because that's all part of the parallel. But that's the way we counter that, is by having them sign the contract. Now, if they refuse and they say, well, you know what? I'll work for you guys, but I'm not gonna sign any contracts. I'll say, well, that's part of the stipulation. That is part of the conditions because we're investing a lot of money. And therefore, we need to know if you're gonna stay here and, and be that person that's gonna be with us. That's the only way we can do it legally.
Yeah, like any job, I'm not just not saying police department.
Oh, no. No, that can go with any job.
Maintenance department or whatever. They need to be held accountable. If we're sending them to this training, whatever it is, to clean whatever, you're getting trained for something or other. Or that's a feather on your hat when you go to someplace else.
Oh, yeah. I, I agree totally on that. And, and you're right, it just doesn't apply to law enforcement. It can apply to any job that we have here, that if you're gonna spend that kind of money. Any basic training that is given to an employee is pretty much a given. Any advanced training, that's when it starts costing the town some money. If I decide to send some of my officers to advanced training, that's not part of the basic. That's gonna cost us money, but it has to be done because they have to get those advanced hours. That's how it works. But we could apply the same principle to other jobs as well. It works. It's just towns, villages have never enforced it. They've done it, but they never enforce it. They just say, oh, yeah, I'm good business with this guy. We don't want, we don't want to deal with it. And they don't pursue when they actually could have. That's how, that's why you never see that law, you don't see it in case, uh, case law or in courts because the town's just saying, ah, it's too much hassle.
Yeah, let's get them out of here.
But in this situation, since you feel so strong about it, let's do it.
We need to enforce it. Like I said, I've been here many a years. And people come and go, we train them. I'm repeating myself. We train them. Just because they're getting two or three dollars down in stancia, they're going to stancia. And they're, but we are the ones that are out the money, sending them to this training.
Oh, absolutely. Uniform calls, that's all this expensive. But we have to provide that as part of the employment. But I understand your, your concern on that. That's my recommendation on that should be, is to apply to everybody and actually go after them.
Yeah. We might end up losing at the, at the end, but at least they know that we mean business.
Yes, ma'am.
You have a question? Moving on. Approval to purchase, uh, police and fire department radios.
I wanna give you the radios that are, departments currently using, this one. This is the radio that we are currently using. They're about fifteen years old. This is the new radio that I'm proposing. It's the APX four thousand, Motorola. And I'm glad the chief, our department is here, because I talked to him and danced about it. Talked to the mayor about, uh, doing a total reorganization with this agency. One of the main things that we gotta look for is communication for the officers. Right now, we cannot hit, those are Steve Tony, uh, twelve fifties, which is the, the little one right there. We cannot hit from here to Capia, which is the repeater. Unless we're bouncing off our own repeater, which is a mountain air. The H, uh, the APX four thousand is a digital analog converter. So therefore, whatever system we are trying to get, it automatically go to that system. Whereas the other one is strictly, is strictly analog. Under the new Department of Homeland Security, uh, under the Inoperability Act, what they're doing is they're urging all law enforcement, fire, EMS personnel to go to the digital. Because by twenty nineteen, they're gonna start mandating it. And those agencies that do not comply are gonna be left in the code. Therefore, you won't be able to talk to state fire, you won't be able to talk to your local unit because the system is already gonna be outdated. Digital is the way to go. This radio provides that capability because it, it goes in both, uh, frequencies. According to the contract, which I gave Dennis to provide to you, we have a formal proposal from Motorola Company. And there's two options. We can go three years on this lease program, so another, it's a lease. At the end of the lease, we own the equipment. What they're asking right now for whether we choose option one or option two is twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars and ninety-nine cents. So you think about it, you go, my goodness, that's a lot of money. While these radios, this radio in particular, the APX four thousand, normally runs for thirty-two hundred dollars apiece, they're gonna give it to us for eighteen hundred dollars on their law enforcement discount. So we're saving money there. The terms, which I suggested would be a five year acquisition that has the lowest APR rate of seven point six percent as opposed to the other nine point two. That can change depending on where we sit and we run our credit. Because we have to do a credit act with, with this corporation. So if our credit, we're in the triple A standards, how, how we standard import, our APR will go even lower. What we're looking for just in this term right now is we're looking at, um, monthly payment, uh, five ninety-one forty-four, which will be split evenly between our agency, the fire, and police. Because they're also gonna get radios. They're in need of radios. As you can see, we're in need of radios. The handhelds are just not working the way they used to. Back in the days, they were probably real good. Now, we're, we're falling behind in time. Each month, it, it gets more complicated. I think based on that term, we extend it over a five year term. We don't have to plunk down twenty-nine thousand dollars. All we have to do is put in five ninety-one a month, split with two, uh, between two departments, and provides the equipment that's needed by the fire and it's needed by the police. It, it's something that we have to really look at because if we don't start now, what's gonna happen is that we're gonna fall by next year. And then we're gonna be trying to catch up to the, to the trend. And that, and that is gonna do is that they're gonna up the prices. Because when, when there's a need, there's always a higher cost. Right now, we're getting in right at the end before it's gonna be mandated. So I think it, it's a good proposal. It comes with a three year, on this five year term, it comes with a three year warranty. Fully covered. Anything happens to this radio, we lose it, we drop it, we burn it, gets run over. All we have to do is we do of course a police report and it gets replaced for nothing. They'll give us another one. Stand on the product. Uh, the individual that I'm dealing with is Loco. And he has provided me with all the information and all the support. Once approved, he told me it'll take less than two weeks to get that equipment to us once it's all set and done.
Has it been tested?
Yes, we've been testing that radio. Uh, I got it today because I have to reprogram. I hit off that little radio from Zuzak. I was coming in from Albuquerque and I hit off of that. And TC SO picked me up very clearly. And I got into Moriarty, I did more testing. Milton picked me up here on that radio, I was using that little radio. Now, depending on where you go, the closer, of course, that we are to our repeater, which is here in mountain air, the better we're gonna get a reception. We went out to the hotspots today, the dead spots by Abbo and, and this area. And it came in a little squelchy, but they still heard us and, and at, at dispatch center. So once we.
And in normal circumstances with the old radios, they didn't hear you at all?
Oh, no. You didn't hear nothing. Not even on mobile. Yeah, we couldn't even talk to each other. The good thing about this radio, it's got all the channels. Uh, they'll program it for us for free. We usually charge. And they'll put in all the frequencies for fire. They'll give them all the frequencies that they need to, to have. Of course, our tech channels, which is that way we can talk when we're at scene. Provide us with all our regular channels to mon, to monitor state leads, sheriffs. Uh, they'll even program Moriarty, Stancet, whatever we want in there, they'll program it.
Did you say they'll put on a training? You'll put on a training, uh, workers?
Uh, these ones, right? The APX?
Yeah, well.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, they, they, they tell us if we want, they, they'll come in, the sales guys will come in with their techs and they'll show us. We talked to Ben about it and he said the, these radios are pretty good. Now, there's other radio companies out there that are trying to sell us. There's Kenwood, there's, uh, another company that's not, it's part of Kenwood, but, uh, EF Johnson. I think it's EF Johnson. They, they make really expensive radios. For the money, I think this would be the best bet to start out with. Instead of outright doing twenty-nine thousand dollars and then six months later, you say it don't work. We save. If anytime during the contract, if we feel that this is not gonna work and we wanna upgrade to another radio or something like that, we have those options of, of moving in, in the contract.
Who does county use?
County's got the twelve fifteens, which is the, the little tiny one. That's what they're using. We would be the first in this area to go to that APX digital. Because all these other radios are all analog. It's already outdated.
And Phillip, yours will come out of the fire protection thing?
Yeah. Yeah, I have.
I know it looks like a lot on paper and I mean, it's a lot of money, don't get me wrong, but it is. But when you break it down monthly and split between the two, I mean, you're looking at about twenty-four hundred dollars a year.
Worth it. When your house is burning, it's good, we can talk to each other. Because seriously, a lot of times we can't even talk to dispatchers. I can't even talk to this guy across town. Those radios are, they're horrible. We have more trouble. In fact, the further we get away from mountain air, the better those other ones work. But they're, they're pretty bad. And like you said, they're gonna be obsolete and then we're gonna really be hurting to have to use that other one.
And you've done, have you done research on the other one?
Uh, yeah, I've done a lot. In fact, when we approved in the summer for me to buy some radios, you know, I only had this, I approved this, that, some, I think four thousand, I was gonna get what I could get. They wouldn't even talk to me.
Really?
They wouldn't even call me back because that's not enough money for them to even open their door. So I didn't get any radios off of that. I spent that money on other things because I, uh, two, three companies, no one would even. Unless you go the route like this, they're not even gonna do it. Which is kinda horrible, I thought.
Yeah, it is. But that's, that's how they make the money. One, because I tried the same thing. I said, hey, let's go with just five radios. They wanted close to fifteen thousand, one company. And I said, I'm gonna spend fifteen thousand just for five radios as opposed to fifteen radios for twenty-nine. And we each split it. Uh, you have about, what, six, seven individuals? I think we'll have about two extra radios between us that in case one of them goes down or something, we have, we have to pack it. And then the old ones we'll keep. We're not gonna get rid of them. Motorola is a pretty good product. Not as good as the feds, they, they, they have the good stuff. But those things you're talking about, five thousand, six thousand dollar radios. I think for the bank, for, for our area, for what we need to upgrade our system for public safety, I think this would be probably the best viable option to go in.
And county fire has some of those already? And they do very well.
Is that, uh, is that price include accessories like antenna, lithium battery?
Everything.
Chargers?
Everything.
Do you have any cars? You get, you guys, is it gonna come with a car charger as well?
Not, not car chargers. That's, these radios will come equipped as they stand with the charger and an extra battery. Now, if we want to have like those stacked battery chargers, or those are, that's about two thousand dollars, I said, now. So they'll give us the, the, the home chargers that we can have in, we can put in the car or we can put in the desk and, and they'll charge up. Now, the mic.
Yeah.
If you want a mic, then that's a little extra, um, um, cost there if you go for the mic option. Here's the problem that I found out with mics. If the mic doesn't have an antenna, it's gonna be worthless, especially for the area that we work at. So the best thing to do is to have that just the way it sits or when the officer's talking, he's talking actually into the radio itself. Because the mic takes away your kind of, that distance unless that mic, that microphone speaker has an antenna attached to it. It's the only way you're gonna keep the transmission that's going. Another option is, uh, I think Freddie, you told me that we had some vehicles that had some boosters in the unit. I don't know if that, if they just.
The repeaters?
The repeaters in the car that help when you're talking. The repeaters in the car that help when you're talking on these walkie-talkies. It goes off the car and it boosts us up to the repeater, which is Mount Air. But these are powerful enough to not need that. That, of course, would cost a little bit extra more money for us to have those built-in repeaters in the units. These are probably the best option we have right now. I checked into the Kenwoods and it was just too much money.
And the county generally goes with Motorola, so they generally have programming software. So if we need to program, Ben can program them at Motorola. But other than Motorola, Ben can't really help us out programming, which costs more after those three years as well.
It's about a hundred and fifty-five dollars per radio to program.
What's the lifespan of these?
Well, the HD twelve-fifties, most of that radio right there is about over fifteen years. This one right here is designed to go at least twenty with proper care, you know, changing the batteries, of course.
But I'm talking like technology-wise?
Technology-wise, that is the feature for police radios because they're di- it's converted-
So we're not getting something in three years and we're like, oh, well now they're not gonna be digital, we're doing them.
Yeah, the digital is where we wanna be because the inoperability act that's being imposed by FEMA and being imposed by DHS is requiring that. Because, I mean, right now, state police and all these other big agencies are all digital and some of them are encrypted, this is not encrypted. That's a little extra money if you go to encryption. But it's digital, that means that we can talk to these other agencies that are already, that we work with just by flipping the switch because now we're on the same frequencies and so forth.
Any questions? Do we still have a repeater at the park?
That, that would be the Mount Air repeater, yes sir.
Like you have to upgrade any of that, something to upgrade?
I spoke to the guy on that and he said they wanted to come out. I don't know if I can get him, I'm trying to get him to do it for free, but I don't know if they'll charge me a service fee. Because I told him, I said, we have a repeater and I would like to check it out before we do this to make sure that, that it's compatible. Because if it's gonna cost a lot of money to upgrade that, then these are gonna be not that worth investment. So I have to make a decision, I have to get your approval.
So if we approve these, are you gonna purchase them immediately or are you gonna wait until that's done?
I'm gonna wait. If I, if I just get the approval, I will wait until we get it and make sure that, that our repeater is compatible with this and we don't have to do any special upgrades. But right now, as we're told, Florence County can hear us on their repeaters and we're bouncing off of theirs because we're bouncing off of our repeater here. It looks like it's working, but we wanna verify.
Money waste? Yeah, so I was gonna say, from a budgetary perspective, don't look at it so much as twenty-nine thousand dollars we're getting hit right now. We're not, we're only getting hit seven thousand ninety-seven a year for five years. So law enforcement protection fund will cover it.
And fire protection?
Yeah, yeah, that's fire protection.
That's easier to swallow.
That's, yeah, that's what I mean, when you look at that five ninety-one, it's less than three hundred dollars a month for each, each department. But that's, that's an easy, that's an easy, yeah.
So from a budget perspective, they're not even gonna blow our budget.
Since you're there looking at, because I was looking to accessories because my truck, I carry four extra batteries, I carry an extra radio, I carry a antenna because if you don't have communication, if you're getting a large, you know, if you're there, you might as well look into accessories as well.
I can, I can add that and see if they, if I can get them to throw it in. They're, they're really, right now, they're willing to bargain because they know that, that everybody wants to do these. And the more radios we have to bargain with, we have a platform. Like the chief said, one radio to rail, they don't even wanna hear it. Fifteen radios plus maybe additional ones, a bit more accessories, then we can start calling and saying, hey, well, you know, we wanna do this, but can you help us out with this? Can you do this for us? All we can do is ask, all we can do is ask.
In the future, could we look at really getting the maintenance department ready instead of cell phones? I know at one time they had. I believe the maintenance department needs because they could be called out for a fire to turn off utilities and-
And that's the big thing right now, I think that the reason why maintenance knows a lot about the fires is because Kerry and Carl. Or do you guys get a call? Do you guys get a call?
Oh. It's really Kerry and Carl, isn't it?
They should be getting one.
Usually it's Carl, which Carl gets Kerry.
Kerry, right.
Before we had radios, we were the first responders to go fire. And that's the way it should be because if they have gas, you'd have to be there. Maybe it's been to our, we're not the first responder, by that time it's something real. I have been asking for radios for a long, I think we've been there.
Do you guys think, wow, that's what I was gonna say, do you guys think that? Do you guys, do you, do you guys need all members to have a radio or would it be simple to have the on-call person have a radio? Because if they have two extra-
The last time that we've talked about this was that at least if we could get one, that the person on call to have that, then, you know, I'd be okay with that.
To the supervisor and the one that-
No, actually that was true. Yeah.
And if we have two extra, we could get money from the gas. Should they pay the monthly for that, you know what I mean? So anyway, be that much, because I mean, five ninety-one was a fifteen.
And what was the reason they went off the radio?
They just little by little took us off of it and then at one point, they're eighty-one is on the same frequency as Estancia. As they say, we're not allowed to be on it, which we never spoke on it anyway. But we, we wanted it because of the fires and stuff and like David said, if we didn't hear that fire, by that time, we've already been at the fireside, we already pulled the gas meter out and we'd be out of a firefighter cell waiting. And now it's like-
I, I have not been to one fire in this town that I haven't had, they haven't been there, so I will say, they're always, they're always- But having that initial quick call, but I, you guys have never not been there, so you guys actually assist us in a lot of ways. They're a big help to us.
Yeah.
But having them, actually having a tone out a little quicker would help them.
Yeah, we did have two and that would work out good.
So then I have this question, um, do, would they get a frequency of their own?
Yes. Yeah, we can, we can program the radio for them to have the main frequency and then a ta- like a- Card-to-card, like a card-to-card, where they could talk by themselves. And then on these main radios, we would also have their channel. So the police and fire would have their channel, so if we have to talk to them, we just switch.
As long as we could, you know, for their call required or-
Yeah.
At that point, they could probably actually get a tone out.
I think, I think your programmer is that, because with our railroad, you don't step on us and we don't step on you. Oh, you can have a roaming tour where I can hear you and call you.
Yeah.
Turn off the fire channel.
Go to scan and you get everything where you can just stay in your frequency.
If you're on the road, you're monitoring what? Fifty or thirty-six hundred, we were eighty-four or seventy-two, you can have different channels and monitor anything like that, so you guys can hear it.
Yes, sir.
At this finance charge, you're looking at forty dollars per radio. So, per month. So, you know, you get five, so that's two hundred bucks, you get seven, whatever. I think we really should, I, is it possible to go back to them and say, can we give us a quote for eighteen radios?
Yes, sir. Easy. The more, the more we give them, the more they're gonna go down in price.
If they, if they get their own frequency and they can use it, I don't see it, I mean, instead of having to look for the person to call and say, where's Carl? Hey Carl, you know, I say-
You could also put a base at the, at the town hall where you can call them out.
We used to do that, I remember having to call you guys on the radio.
Yeah, I think that, um, what, how they explain it is the more, like anything else, when we buy involved, it's always cheaper. So the more radios we get, the more stuff, it forces them to go lower because now they have to break down. I mean, just a fifteen radio, imagine if I was just buying one, thirty-two hundred dollars, that's a lot of money for one riff. When we went fifteen, that's when they said, we'll give it to you for eighteen hundred or whatever the price, I think it's in there. But they, they actually gave us a big discount for buying more. So, yeah, if we ask them, do you want three radio, base radio?
It's definitely up to council, but we have another meeting in exactly one week.
Yes, sir.
I think maybe if you can go back, get a quote for eighteen radios?
Yes, sir.
And look at the accessories like Councilman Diaz said.
Yes, sir.
Let's try that route, I mean, maybe we'll get a better deal and we get maintenance involved as well.
Okay.
Can you look at, on some of the accessories, the option of buying accessories outright, so finance and accessories?
So I won't be on the-
So I won't be on the finance charge for five years? Because some of the accessories may be cheaper if we could buy it right and then finance.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I would rather do that.
Yeah. And then also, uh, the repeater thing, if we can try to get that, try to get them out, hopefully.
I can do that. Yeah, they're, they're just waiting on us, you know, to, to formalize that, but, you know, I wanted to present this so that we would get a bigger picture. I was hoping that the first time that, of doing with David, you know, getting the maintenance guys in there, then I was told that they need radios if they were on cell phones, so that's why you need to do it. But it, it makes sense to do it in three departments, three ways.
Again, what I like about the radio is, I mean, I'm not the most uptight to be on the radio, just to listen. The thing is that I like the radios, it's like, like Rich said, supervisor, because we're on call twenty-four seven, you know, if we're around. The maintenance is on call twenty-four seven, you know. So if we hear a tone, like we used to with the other radios, then we listen and it'll say, structure fire at such and such. That's, that's our main concern, is structure fire. As far as talking and all that, you know, it's not really necessary. However, like you said, you know, that, you know, where we can communicate with you guys or whoever's on call or whatnot, you know, I like that.
It's all tied in.
Right.
Because they're all tied in.
Yeah, it's probably the same.
But if you're, if you're scanning, a lot of times you'll get a lot of info before you ever get tone. You already know something's going, going on in certain area.
Same in the beginning, we were getting calls from the, uh, Estancia or from the dispatch. And then also getting quick calling.
And that's what you need, you need dispatch because for whatever, sometimes you guys might be too busy calling the others and then go down the line by that time. And, and our, our deal, well, it used to be that. We're trying to get to that gas meter or whatever, plug it up and whatever before firefighters got there. That way we're not on their way or whatever, you know.
So I think, I don't know, you guys, you guys want to take a left on that meeting and then you can get that stuff done, get an extra quote.
Yeah, I was gonna say, is this the scatters kind of? Because I know, I know for the office, a lot of people doing crap at work, so I, I carry the longer one and a lot of people have the seven one. See, that kinda helps you out on twelve, I don't know if there's other options.
Well, that's the standard antenna that comes with that radio for police. Now, they do have the long extenders like when you're out there, like almost like a whip.
Yeah.
That would obviously cost more. That's, that's what they're putting on this radio for, for the standard police mag, it's trying to- I mean, we can go with a shorty if we want, but that's-
No, I, I know, I don't like the shorty, I don't like the long.
Yeah, yeah, we want, we, for us, we have to be a long. But that's, that's about, yeah, but that one is about the standard, but not for that radio and all. But yeah, I'll, I'll reshare the rest of the, for the accessories, for the maintenance, I'll just put it all in one and then resubmit the, the proposal and then they'll, they'll have all your answers.
I was thinking the ground enable, maybe you can just leave that other antenna, it'll be out of trouble.
We'll be getting a second antenna, don't we?
Yeah, there you go.
Hey, we're buying all this stuff, couldn't we, can you help us out?
Look into the mics too, just, just in case, because with us, there's, there's loss and there's just damage. When the guy's out there pulling his packs out and talk all the time and something's, something's urgent, you set it down, you drop it, you lose it, break it. Whereas if you have it fixed to your belt, where, wherever you have it with the clip and you're talking with your mic here, you're never really losing your, your packs, it's not off your person. That's a, that's a, I think it's a-
A lot of, a lot of agencies have gone away from that because of the fact that if you get in a fight, they can use the cord to wrap around you.
On the fire, they get hung up on.
Yeah, they, and they get-
Yeah, we have, our gear has a pocket right here.
Yeah.
That you're, instead of like you're saying with on belt, then our fire gear has a pocket, that's right. And that, I had one with that and it just gets hung up on.
They have, they have microphones that are Bluetooth that are actually connected to your phone or some way and then you can move it around and it's wireless. That's, but those are expensive. But I'll look into all the accessories and, uh, and we'll go with that.
Any questions?
I think the motion that we table and we get all the information that is required for us to make our decision.
Okay.
My motion by one, that's a table end, a second by Richard, roll call, Richard?
Four.
Tony, four.
Eighter, four.
Ernie, four. Thank you, sir. All right, actually stay there because the next-
Would you as well, approval of changes to police department habitat rights?
Now, is this pertaining to the submission of the uncertified officers?
Yeah, so what this basically does is actually gives a, a definite salary or a definite amount on the, and I didn't make my second unfortunately, I apologize. Um, on the uncert, so the non-cert would be starting at thirteen dollars an hour to start. And then upon completion of the certified, uh, of the class in Mexico law enforcement, they would then move on to the certified police officer grade scale. With that, it is seventeen dollars to start during the six-month probation, that increases up to twenty-one. Starting page based on experience, so if we get someone that, so that works in two ways. Obviously, if it's a, if it's a person that's uncertified and they go get certified, they're gonna start at seventeen. But let's say someone comes from, you know, Albuquerque, APD, and they wanna be an officer here. I mean, we wouldn't start them off at seventeen, obviously, we can start them off at, you know, anywhere from seventeen to twenty-one based on their experience. Um, another thing that this has in it that, um, I know is always a, uh, argument, so we don't get right to it, is the take-home units. Being able to take your home, take home your unit within a fifty-mile radius of town. That's the two main changes that I, that I saw from the prior advertisements that we put out. Also, uh, and I don't even know if I told you this, chief, um, on the un, on the non-certified, I took out the, um, uh, bonus. I, I don't, uh, sending them to the academy, I think is bonus enough. Um, we're starting their career, so as Dennis mentioned. For the, uh, regular police officer, if they got hired on as a police officer already certified, they have a bonus of three thousand dollars, which would be fifteen hundred dollars bonus at the end of the six-month probation and then fifteen hundred dollars at the end of the one-year anniversary from that anniversary. So it would be at six months and at eighteen months, they would get fifteen, uh, fifteen hundred.
Yes, sir.
I believe they'll eliminate your changes, uh, that were done from prior, from prior. Any questions? I know we're gonna be talking about the take-home unit, so let's jump right into that.
So, I'm just kinda curious, you know, we said, quality in place, not to take home any vehicles, so now the units are being taken home, right?
Yes, I have approached the mayor on it and I said, to ask you, when was this decision made for them to take their cars home?
Yeah, yeah, I was just kinda irritated by that because there was name, like brought up to council, this was like, you know, we find out after the fact, people are coming up to me and like, oh, you're saying, I listen to you, prove by council first, I'll just do whatever you want, thank you all, because in the past, it was being abused. So that's all the reason why you put this take-home policy in place. I don't know, to me, that's just kind of a, it's not gonna face to me, it's the way it go.
Because we are the governing body and as a governing body, we make that decision for them not to take their home. They, they come to a point and leave their personal, go do their duty, come and go.
And I have to apologize, so I'm gonna, uh, help with that decision. Um, the reason why I made that decision is I, I, my, my thought process, and I'm gonna explain it, you may agree with it, you may not. We have a new chief coming in, I wanted to kind of give him the authority to do what he saw fit to make the department what it needed to be. And, uh, that was a decision that, you know, we was okay with and basically, you know, I don't want to, sometimes I feel like, you know, I was part of, I was part of it too, but sometimes I feel like we hold the strings too tight and then that's what kind of causes some, some issues. So I wanted to loosen up those a little bit, I wanted to give him the opportunity to make those decisions. I see where it, where it would, where it would step on your toes and I would probably- Um, I see where it, where it would, where it would step on your toes and I would probably feel the exact same way if I was in your position. And I, I take the responsibility for, for them being able to take the units home. And you guys have the ability to change that, um, if you guys please.
Yeah, I mean, taking home a, a unit is a privilege, right? So even when I see vehicles a lot, big vehicles a lot, when I see, you know, reports of officers opening vehicles, I know, and I'm seeing like, you know, I don't know, not just you guys, you know, your units being wrecked and not reported or after the fact, I feel, I don't know, that kinda, just kinda irritates me.
Can I kind of comment on that? I, I totally agree with, with what you're saying, sir. Here, here's my take on this. As in my career, each agency that I've worked for has always had a take home car program. And it's always been the most contentious part of any city council meeting, always. The reason why is because officers do abuse it. They do abuse it. Some agencies allow take home units, certain radius. The standard right now is about fifty miles. If you look throughout the state, it's fifty miles. The benefit to a take home program is that it's used as an incentive to retain officers. When you have an agency that can pay way up here and has hardly any benefits, to draw those officers, you gotta give them something. And take home unit is one of those incentives that a lot of agencies use, state police uses, at Ben Aliyah, EPD. Just about every city around in this region has a policy. The way you control it is you advise your officers, this take home unit is a privilege, it's not a right. It's a privilege that the town, village is giving you. Don't mess it up. As I understand, uh, what counselor, uh, Adrian said, is that it's been abused in the past. If anything else, anything gets abused, but here's my, my counter to that. Why punish the persons that are not abusing it for those that have abused it? That is the way management works, is if you punish everybody for somebody else's doing, you're taking away that privilege from that individual that it takes pride in, in keeping the unit clean, keeping the unit maintained, because that is part of our responsibility when we're assigned these units. We have to keep them maintained. So if one of my officers abuses it, the disciplinary action falls upon that officer and privileges are such, you get a written reprimand, first time. Second time, a little bit more serious, you get that unit taken away from that individual and you punish that individual and say, hey, for the next sixty days, your take home privileges are gone. So now that officer's gonna think twice about saying, well, I, all I had to do was just change the oil, I, I shouldn't have went to the market when I could have. I've explained to the officers that the take home car program is a such official business. Some agencies allow, allow you to use that, that unit to do shopping, go to the movies. Well, those are the big departments that have, the big insurance that have that capability. We don't. I've instructed my officers to say, this is the unit you use to work. You go from here to your house. You gotta go to court, you go to court in that unit. You don't wanna take that unit, you still gotta go to court. But either way, each time that officer's in that unit, they're calling in to dispatch saying, I am in service. I'm going to court, I'm going to the DA's office, official business. We can justify that because of the fact that that officer is officially on duty. As police officers, we're on duty twenty-four seven. Some officers choose to say, nope, I'm done after my ten hours, I'm, I'm not a cop, I'm taking out my badge and gun. Well, that's your deal. But if you're driving a marked unit, I've instructed these officers, you will be in uniform. That is one of the requirements. You will take care of that unit. You will not abuse it because it is a privilege, not a right. And it's also a drawing factor for officers that we're trying to recruit right now, because right now competition is high. A lot of people are very surprised that we're offering three thousand dollar bonus. We're only two thousand dollars below APD, they offer five. Santa Fe took away their bonus. They used to have a five, ten thousand dollar bonus, sign up, take home cars, everything. And they drew so many people that it, they just kinda slowly to save money, pushed it aside. I agree with the mayor, I'm a non-certified officer. Get rid of the bonus. We're already giving you that training, like Juan, Juanita said. We're giving you something. We're giving you a job, we're giving you training and on top of that, we're providing all the equipment that you need. That's the way to do it. We have to change our trend, we have to change our market. It's, it's not a business, it's government. But in order for us to compete in today's world of, of employment and draw that, we're here, we have to offer something. And, and one of those benefits is an incentive. It is a take home car unit. Now, the fifty mile radius, fifty miles goes to where? Albuquerque is just right on the border of that. Berlín, Las Lunes, they're within the fifty. Mariotti, Edgewood, within the fifty. So how do we justify that? We justify that when we have to call out an emergency, that officer's gonna respond in emergency mode. What we, what we call is code three, light siren and all that, to come here. Are we gonna ask those officers to respond from their house, put on their uniform, get in their personal vehicle, which is insured by them, not us, and tell that officer to drive over here for an emergency and they get in an accident? We're liable.
So you're telling your officer to drive code three out of Albuquerque? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, if they're called for an emergency response, to respond to a, a, a town emergency. If they're, if I need it in here and it's an emergency and it's classified as an emergency, they have, they have that authorization to run code three from that because they're, they're covered under the Safe Pursuit Act. If they get in an accident and they go beyond what, I mean, you've still gotta follow the law and we're responding in that mode. We've still gotta look at our intersections, we gotta give way and all that. But the thing is, what I'm saying is that if we make a call out, my officer lives right on the cusp of Las Lunes and I say, I need you here, we have an emergency in, in this town, that person is authorized to drive code three at that point, if it requires that. It's not like, I'm gonna fire, we're gonna have our fire response people here. That's a given, we're gonna have that response. So therefore, if I need them for something, it's not gonna be a code three situation. That's gonna be at the discretion of myself. But if it's an emergency, emergency where the town needs us now, that's how we justify it. Because if we ask that officer to respond in that fashion from their home, which is gonna take them forty-five minutes or more through traffic and all that, and they get in an accident, they're in uniform, we're responsible for, for their actions because they are on duty.
Yeah, I, I mean, I just have a hard time with that because I have, you know, in the past, I know officers running off the road, coming a hundred miles an hour. I mean, that's, I don't know, I don't think that's right. I mean, first of all, it's, you know, you gotta think of your own safety. And you gotta think, you know, just make it easier to tell, you know, I mean, you're putting a lot.
Oh, no, I, I totally agree with you. I have been in many pursuits myself in my career. And fortunately, I've never gone into an accident with anybody and that's, and you've seen the news, officers running code three in the city and they don't see an individual that runs a red light and you kill somebody, well, it's gonna happen. But you've gotta take those precautions. And I agree with you, I mean, you're coming, you're a citizen, you're, you're, you're driving down the road. The next thing you see is behind you, you see all these lights coming at you and then here comes this vehicle flying by you. That is why you employ officers that are mature and you tell them, everything applies here. Remember the Safe Pursuit Act of when you're in pursuits, because that applies to emergency driving. We have to go through that emergency EVOC training. That's part of our requirement. They teach you all that. And you gotta have some kind of maturity. Now, if that individual negligently abuses that and causes an accident or causes something in our name, meaning the town of Mount Neer, then that person can be liable. We can hold that person liable and say, you caused this accident, therefore the town should not be held to a tort claim because you're the one that negligee went beyond the scope of your duties. Scope of duties is very important in this, in this profession. We are trained to do use of force, we're trained to do certain act. When we go above that, our training, above our training, implement our own biases, or I think this guy needed to, a little bit of this, we have gone beyond the scope. It applies the same thing as emergency driving, it's called EVOC. The officers are held to a higher standard, that's why we have to go through our training to justify driving an emergency vehicle.
And how often do they go through that?
That, that training's required once a year, just like the DDC course, which is part of the town responsibility for municipality. We have to do EVOC training, that's once a year. That's part, it's not part of our biennium, it's additional training. Because we have to show an instructor who's certified by the state that we can operate an emergency vehicle, doing backing, parking, they put you through a SKID test, how to handle their vehicles and turn. They do all that. It's, it's about ten hours long and you have to pass that course, take a test. Have our officers gone through it? Our officers have not gone through that because I am surprised. Because that is a mandatory training and it hasn't gone through because of prior administrations haven't either known about it or they just weren't aware of it. I guarantee you, it's, it's gonna be done under my administration.
Because I'm with Adrian. I'm driving down the road. I see one of our police officers, boom! And when they get here, uh, to Mount Neer, they're like.
Send the nation your call.
And you wonder, what was the emergency?
Well.
You know, minus lights and, and you see a police officer here, you're in the, it's almost getting killed because you're trying to move away from that individual.
Yes, ma'am.
And now they're coming.
Now, take that, take that instance and you multiply it into the congested urban area and it gets even worse. That's why they made the law move over to the right if you see an emergency vehicle, that's the law. Now, if any of our officers here abuse them, where they're driving in excess of the posted speed limit and they're not an emergency call, that's disciplinary action, right off the bat. It ain't gonna be, why? It's gonna be, this is the report, this is how we got it. Why were you driving at sixty miles an hour and ran this individual off the road when you just went to a larceny call?
Or just to say.
You have to justify it, but I'm thinking here, I haven't seen, I don't know, being the, the new chief, I have not heard of any of these officers that are currently on this department of doing that. But I can assure you this, it won't happen under my administration.
Mostly.
It's that training. Well, I've heard of some things, but.
No, I wasn't there. I was, I was part of the council, obviously you, you know, that passed that, um, thing and it was obviously under Chung's, when Chung was chief. Um, we, was under him? It wasn't, it wasn't under him.
Yeah.
To lock cars home?
Really? But it was because of him. Because, I was gonna drive into the thing, but anyway. We, we have GPS now, or we'll.
Although I, I, I get the chief's side, I get those sides.
So now, so now if Adrian says, you know, I was run off the road by the dump and I came into town and he's getting a hot chocolate, we can go and look at the GPS and say, yeah, you were, what the heck did you do? So we have a, a, a way to check and to see, you know, what, what that, what it does. And we, that GPS is actually very sophisticated. He could get alerts if, if they go above seventy miles an hour. He could get alerts if they brake really quickly. He can get alerts for all this stuff. So we can get in there and we can make these things where we will monitor that kind of, that kind of stuff. Right now, we use it basically where we're like, hey, you know, why was he out in, you know, wherever? We go look at that. But we have GPS now where I think we can kind of police the police.
I, I don't mind, I don't mind that, I don't mind that at all. A lot of agencies have gone through GPS because of that reason. They, it's transparency and it's accountability and that's what we want. But the thing is, is that it also, the same, it, it's the same kind of concept with, with the cameras. A lot of officers don't like cameras, why? It invades my privacy, I can't do what I want. But you know what it also does? It protects the town from liability. You cannot dispute video. You cannot dispute GPS. If that officer's driving at eighty miles an hour and I ask him, hey, why are you driving eighty miles an hour from court back here? What, what was the, the reason here? I messed up. Okay, well, here's your mess up, here's your written, first time. One more, that's what? Car goes away. The take home policy was designed to provide that extra security for cities. By having officers having their cars at their home, you living in the area, made everybody feel more safer. That's what the take home car started at and then it became an incentive. And then they found out that it even worked better because they found that officers that took their vehicle home, maintained their vehicles better, kept them cleaner and were far more responsible than individuals that just went to a station and picked up a car in what we used to call hot seating, took somebody else's car. Because they said, well, I don't have to worry about, I'll let the other officer worry about the oil change. That's what that take home car program did and that's why I was proposing it, to re-implement that and make it official to bring that draw of the officers, forget of what happened in the past through the abuse. Now we're more accountable here. We have the system, we have the monitoring, myself, we have the GPS to back us up. And any, any call that is emergency, it's documented by, by TCSO. We're gonna tell them. I'm going, I'm running code from Estancia over here, I got an emergency, I'll be running code. You just tell the whole county what you're doing and if something happens, you are, you're, you're covered as long as you have your emergency equipment on. That's, that's pretty much how you run your emergencies.
I think what God gave me was, I'm repeating myself, as a governing body, and he's, he couldn't do it because he would be a rolling form. But he could have told Dennis, call Adrian, call the Ernest.
That, that's also a real. We would have to bring it to council, but I take.
I think you could have been on the last one, right?
Yeah, because they've been taking them for a while. How many meetings have we?
Uh, sorry, I have no. When did you get hired, do you know?
Uh, nine twenty-five.
Nine twenty-five, so, yeah.
You know, common courtesy, that's what gets to me. It's common courtesy we should have been told. Or even you could have gone and said, this is what we're doing.
I, I under, I understand the concern, uh, council. Like I said, the mayor, I spoke to him about it, he approved it and I assumed at this point that it was, it was done. And I will take responsibility as well because I'm here to serve you all. But I also should be given that, that, that discretion as a department head to make a decision that affects the operations of this agency where it's gonna bring professionalism and stability to this agency that was so needed in the past. And I thought it was a good move on, on, on the mayor's part, just like he said, when he hired, there were certain things that we needed to fix. I'm fixing those things. I got my, my fingers everywhere, but the thing is, is that the big items, the big things that I feel that are really, really important, I'm gonna come to you all. I'm gonna ask you, through the mayor, what do you think? What do we propose here? How do we do that? Because as a department head, you have to manage your, your, your department in a, in a certain way and those were one of those, uh, incidents. So I take full responsibility as well.
That's my thing, we should have.
Yeah, no, I agree. If I was on the council, I probably would have, um, I would probably be saying the exact same thing that you are right now. So I do wanna apologize, um, like I said. Huh?
You ready to go, you think now?
I know, I forgot my roots, I forgot my roots, I apologize. I, uh.
He's forgetting the little person, so.
Not that at all, it's just, you know, like I said, we have a new chief, you know, I wanted to give him, you know, that ability to, to be able to make decisions where it helps the department and those that. So I agree and we should have told you, you know, even if we implemented, we should have just let you guys know. I apologize. Um, I left it to Facebook to do that, so I will not let that happen again.
If I can just say, uh, myself, I think it's a good idea that they do take the car homes. But the fact is that before they were parking their cars here, there was no ban, there wasn't going on. going on on their cars. As soon as they got orders to start parking cars, there was vandalism going on. Sometimes, it's a benefit that you get that people don't vandalize, the cars are not there. It doesn't matter where you park them, you know, and even like us, when we had our city truck that we can't, we couldn't take them home. People were going and taking batteries, stealing the gas and this and that. Since we've been taking our trucks home again, all that stopped. So, I think that for that reason, myself, I think that it's a good idea for them to take them.
Chief, I get your point?
I just wanna let this slide, oh, it doesn't do this. I just wanna let you know where we're coming from.
No, I gotta apologize.
Okay, so what I'm, I'm pointing here at Mr. Borrieta. Okay, he is, well, at one time, we were told he lived in Belen, Rio Rancho forever.
Well, we told him he lived in Belen, then we found out he was parking in Las Lunas, this is the whole other thing. Then all of a sudden, he actually lived in Rio Rancho, and he was parking his car in Las Lunas, where he was prior parking his car in Belen.
So, going to that take-home, is he gonna be able to take his car a fifty-mile radius?
Not to Rio Rancho.
I'm not saying to Rio Rancho.
We should do fifty, I think it should be lower because it's gonna be close to Albuquerque, like, "Oh, I can just drive to Albuquerque." I think it should be a little bit lower, where the people are like, "Well, maybe I should, maybe I should prefer a home in Mount Air." You know, we want these people to home in Mount Air, we don't want them to go off.
Is that a stop six thirty? Is that a stop six thirty?
I think so, three.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-eight?
I myself don't see to where we say the fifty-mile radius and then, okay, go up to Las Lunas, that's what, sixty miles? More or less?
Well, it depends on how, okay, so let's first clarify this. Because it depends on how you, you do it. If you do it on a map, fifty miles is fifty miles, but really it's seventy miles going around all the little twists and turns. So it has to be fifty miles on a road from one to another. Does that make sense? Because like, if you look at Albuquerque, I mean, Karen Air Force Base is probably what? Fifty miles from us?
Yeah.
But in reality, you drive to Karen Air Force Base, you're looking at eighty-three, you know, I don't know, just throwing that out there. It's like more than thirty, because you're going through all the mountains, you're going through Blue Springs Hill. So, the fifty miles has to be clarified as in road miles or miles on a geographical map.
And there's another option that we can do if the officer lives outside the fifty-mile radius, as we call it. A lot of agencies do, is they pick a halfway point. TCSO, for their officers that live in Rio Rancho, they were leaving their vehicles at the Edgewood Station.
And that's what we started with, you know?
Yeah.
Well, when I first got hired, I was allowed to drive it all the way to Albuquerque. That's where my house is at. And, and I did that for a short period of time, and then they changed it to where I had to drop off the vehicle in Las Lunas and switch to my own personal vehicle and drive from Los Lunas to Albuquerque.
See, I myself don't see to where we should have to do that, take the vehicle all the way to Las Lunas and then park it and then, and then go on your own vehicle all the way to Albuquerque or something like that. Or is it parked there? I mean, now we're going back to what David was saying. If your car's parked in the, parking that out there, now there's gonna be vandalism or something the morning you go, you know?
I mean, it can happen at a police station, we know that.
And it can happen in your own home too.
They're not responsible, I mean, I talked to the commander and they said, "You guys are welcome to park your car here, but here's the deal. Park at your own risk. We're not gonna be responsible if anything happens to you or anyone." Because they park their vehicles inside, and we're not allowed because we're not sheriffs. So, there's a, there's a trade-off there. Some agencies don't care, they'll say, "Yeah, park your car here, but you gotta park it on where the visitors park. You can't park inside very confined areas."
I myself don't see that, I myself that if you're not able to take it all the way to your home, be responsible for it, I really don't see that. Neither in a parking place at Walmart or somewhere, or wherever, you know? And then in Luniya, picking up, and you're like, "No, that's what's happening in that place."
And that's where you stipulate in your case, our contract, all those stipulations. You have to make them count.
So if you do fifty road miles, not fifty miles, but fifty road miles, that's Belen, that's Moryarty, and anywhere in between. Fifty miles, not road miles, includes probably Los Lunas. Probably even parts of Albuquerque, like is that Karen Air Force Base? I don't know exactly, but we're right across the mountains. You know, if you go with a straight line, it may be within those parts of there, you know?
Yeah, that's where that would be.
So, I mean, if you want someone that lives in Belen, I can work here, or lives anywhere in between Belen and here. But I agree, I agree with you, I would rather them take them home than to another police department agency. I don't know, I just, to me, I totally see what you're saying. Because if they can drive to another police department agency and switch vehicles and then come here, why can't they just do it here?
Yeah, exactly. That is, that is true.
But I know like David said, we used to park the equipment in the yard and forget it.
Yeah, people know, they'll see their car, so... Look at the reports in Albuquerque and throughout the state. They know that we carry weapons in the car, they know we carry equipment. That's what they want. And that's the first thing when they see a police car by itself in a parking lot, that guy's got weapons, whether you do it or don't. But if it's parked in your garage, it's parked in your front yard, they're gonna know, we have a cop lives there, but you come up to his property, it's gonna be a little...
Well, they'll study, they'll keep looking at that vehicle, they know, okay, nice time to go check it out.
Yes, sir.
And I believe it even happened here where they busted the window on some vehicle over here at the shop. I remember somebody saying something about her window was busted, you know, even at that, you know?
No, I totally agree, that's why I'm asking for your approval to continue that, but I feel it's a lot more viable for the officers. Take care of them. They abuse it, we take the car and we pull it.
I see it as one of the benefits myself, you know?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
I, I see it to be one of the... If we're gonna say fifty miles, you know, I go by fifty miles, no?
Yes, sir.
And that for the Rio Rancho owners, isn't it?
To me, I'm a...
I found out where he actually lives, he lives in Albuquerque, he's within the fifty mile radius.
I would say, to me, I think if we get somebody from Belen, I would say only as far as Belen. Not Las Lunas. And then if we hire somebody from the other direction, not all the way to Edgewood.
I would say, I would say... That would be discriminatory, I think. Because then we're discriminating one guy from another. He still lives in Torrance County.
No, if you do a mile radius, no road mile radius. So, road miles to Belen is forty-three. Road miles to Moryarty is forty. So if you do forty-five, if you do forty-five, then you are, it's right there, Belen or Moryarty. And if you go anymore, then probably more miles. I don't know, how many miles is that from Moryarty to Edgewood? Eight or nine or something?
Less than seven.
Oh, you said seven?
Seven miles.
Well, it's fifty-three point seven to Las Lunas from here. And forty-nine point seven to Edgewood from there.
See, if you do forty-five, then you're right off. Two months. And that's another thing too, I mean, are we really gonna be like, we can't go without extra two miles? Are we really gonna do it from fifty to forty-five? I mean, I guess we could.
You wanna go, you wanna go on a radius then, instead of road miles then?
No, road miles.
Road miles?
Road miles. Road miles. You Google from Hunter Police Department to their address, and it has to be within that few miles. And unfortunately, if not, then you can't do it.
I take these not do, not do a dollar.
And again, we have to be stringent on the policies. You know, one of the big things that we can't monitor, unfortunately, is smoking in a vehicle. I do not like smoking in a vehicle.
Yes, you mean?
There's no way of monitoring it.
If you, if there are heavy smokers, you could smell it anymore. Oh, God, yeah.
So, but, you know, things like that, they need to come into play. You can't, the vehicles need to be taken care of very well. It's not your personal vehicle.
All these new cars and all that, they are nice cars. And the town has done very well on that. And like I said, their policy for the take-home is be very stringent on abuse. Maintenance, they don't include the maintenance, they don't include everything. You abuse it, you get your car taken away. First offense, you get written up, that goes in your personnel folder. Second offense, then your car gets taken away. That usually attracts, it keeps people from doing that because they're gonna realize, well, geez, you know, this is a threat, I'm getting a vehicle, I can go to my home. And then they mess it up, it's like, "Hey, please." That's the thing that we have to really enforce, and that's my responsibility.
Because we're in a non-smoking environment, and that, that car belongs to the town in Mount Air. They shouldn't be smoking in that vehicle.
Yes, ma'am.
So, the key changes, like I said, to the advertisements are thirteen dollars for uncertified, seventeen starting for certified, take-home unit within fifty miles, and no bonus for uncertified, because we're jump-starting that grade. Those are the major changes that we've added to these advertisements. Any other questions? Questions from the audience?
I have a motion.
Fifty-mile thing, you know, it's sticky, you can try and make a, like you said, you got hash on two miles. Everybody just looked at maps and everybody had a different mile radius cover. Fifty, that's to Moryarty. You know, I mean, if you say it's gotta be ironed that, whose map are you gonna go up?
Does the government use Bing?
The county, no, the county requires Bing, they have to use Bing. It won't allow Google Maps. So maybe some county commissioners establish what web map they're gonna use, utilize. And once you do that, you know? And I know Google's pretty legit.
I think if we put it, okay, let's do this. Pull up the phone. Go to Google Maps. Go to Mount Air PD, Mount Air Police Department.
And then search to Moryarty from this department, and what mileage you got?
What'd you get?
What'd you get?
There you go.
Forty miles, that's what I got. That's what anyone in here would get. Well, you have to make sure that you're, the thing is, if you said you all got different things to Albuquerque, well, it's probably because you put in different things for different, like, you know what I mean? You have, if you put in a straight address and a straight building, you're gonna get the same. It's not gonna be different by ten minutes. Trust me, I think we're good.
Sixty-two miles. All right.
So fifty miles, that's the same, so, wow. You guys can approve this, or you can change it, it's up to you.
No, I, I, I'm fine with it, I just wanted to get my point across, you know, if something, if you guys abuse it, this is coming back to the table again.
Yes, absolutely. The, the take-home car program, I'll draw up all the parameters for it, and they will be strict for everything. They don't include maintenance, mileage, any type of abuse, what it covers, as long as it's fair. Because we can't discriminate from one person to the next, because then we put ourselves in a torturous situation. So it's gotta be fair, straight across. This is the fifty-mile radius we have, this is fifty miles according to road mile, Bing map, however way we wanna assert it. We have to tell the applicants and the employee that, that this is how we're doing it.
And this, and he's absolutely right, so when you put that fifty miles, if someone lives fifty-one miles away, we can't make that exception. No, it was fifty. Because then what's gonna happen is someone's gonna come and it's gonna be fifty-three miles, and they're gonna be like, "Well, he did it for the fifty-one." You have to set it, and that's just it. There's no changing it, if it's fifty-one, you're done.
The balloon feels the parkers out of limits. Letting you know right now.
Do you think they can bring a balloon?
So where does Freddie live at again?
No, I don't think anyone knows where Freddie lives. Freddie, do you know where you live?
It's a secret.
Not just out of information, the sheriff department here in Torrance County has a same problem. They made all their officers that live not in Torrance County, they live in Albuquerque, wherever they live, they made them park it at that station in Edgewood.
Yeah, and I just don't like that because to me, I just...
They did it for a while, but here's what happened. Often, the deputy started quitting on them and said, "Wait a minute. Why is it that the sheriff, under sheriff, and the bigwigs could drive their cars unlimited anywhere, but we have to park our vehicle?" So they came up with a plan. They said, "Okay, you go beyond the fifty-mile radius as we established, we're gonna deduct from your paycheck about a dollar fifty for pay to offset costs for gas."
Yeah, that's just getting too complicated.
So that being, oh yeah, it gets very complicated, because guess what? That person has to report that in their income tax as a cost, like some kind of capital loss, because now they're having to pay out of their own pocket. So in order to avoid all that, the sheriff's department does now as a recruiting to get officers, I mean deputies, there is no restriction. There's guys that are living in Rio Rancho that are deputy sheriffs, that work here in Torrance County. They took it out because they felt that if we're gonna do this, we're gonna do it straight across the board. Either it's fifty or not, or just get rid of it, and there is no restriction. That's where, that's where it comes down to.
Yeah, I'm not in favor of, I don't know if you guys, I mean, you guys can go that way, I'm not in favor of doing the police departments. I just think that, number one, one of the things, benefits, like David said, is when you have it at home, less crime because you're right there. But just because it's at another police, I mean, people can park in Mount Air, there's not a police officer always on duty. What happens if the car gets destroyed? Who's responsible? I mean, I'm sure it'd be the insurance, but still, do you get what I'm saying? I just think there's too many dynamics with that, I think it's either home or here. And it's a, and it's a set, set fifty miles. If their house is at fifty point seven, they're good. If their house is at fifty-one point two, you know, it's fine.
So with all this driving now, are they gonna be filling up at the maintenance department or what?
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause I don't think we ever get any credit cards, right, any?
No.
Yeah, we don't need them. You can fill up at maintenance and it's up to the officer, always maintain a full tank in that vehicle for emergencies and...
So you spent about two hours on this?
I think all the talking points are made, pro and con, it was like Adrian said, it was a policy that they, and then it just wasn't...
And it was.
Well, I'm not saying that, you know, that's...
What did kind of seem to replace that policy then?
Yeah, because it was a policy. Right, I mean... You gotta be careful with that.
Well...
You have policies for...
Well, actually, I didn't put it on there specifically because I went from, you had the vault first.
Oh, okay.
I didn't anticipate, I didn't wanna guess that you had the vault first.
And you didn't know you were gonna get it from both girls, from Adrian and myself, huh?
No, I didn't. I thought we were the crew. That's it, done.
We were supposed to yell out. We were supposed to yell out. Don't get me involved in this.
So, I make a motion to approve the changes to police department advertisements, including the pay and the take-home vehicle policy.
I'm just trying to get my point across, you know what I mean? I'm not gonna just let it slide because of the whole reason we...
Well, that's what I'm saying, you know, there was a policy, we didn't, was it brought to the council? That's what I'm saying. Do you have a second?
Close to do it.
All right, I have a motion on the floor by Adrian to approve the changes to police department advertisements. A second by Richard, roll call Richard.
Four.
Alita?
Four.
Adrian?
Four.
Tony?
Four.
Sir? All right, approval promotion of Carl Archiled to interim public works supervisor. We actually have a executive session about that, so if you guys want...
I motion that we table and vote on that after the executive session.
No second.
You have a motion on the floor to table, I have a motion fourteen, approval promotion of Carl Archiled to interim public works supervisor. A second by Adrian. Carl Richard?
Four.
Alita?
Four.
Adrian?
Four.
Ford.
Bernie?
Ford.
Chief, we gotta move there in like an hour, okay? You're next.
Am I still up?
You're still up.
Stay there.
Okay, I knew the job was gonna be tough, but I'll make it, that's okay, I like challenges. Uh, November crime stats, uh, officers responded to approximately fourteen calls for service regarding, other than the traditional calls, we call them other calls, suspicious persons, people just wanting information, and one illegal dumping, which, uh, uh, the individual was cited for. Uh, in the last, uh, two weeks of this month, we have issued over twenty citations for various violations which resulted in several PA fines and municipal court appearances, we're gonna keep the judge busy. Uh, one DV call, no arrests, a verbal dispute only. Two crash reports for this month. No burglaries. Since we've been in business, we've been enforcement, we've been very active out there. The burglaries have gone down. And the subjects that are responsible for most of those crimes are still in custody. And I've been told by the DA's office that they're gonna be going to prison. Uh, that's what they're dealing with. Uh, we dealt with several individuals, uh, I'm gonna call mental, mentally disabled, uh, on crimes, but as to ensure it's professional, unbiased, uh, response, we still take the reports for that because in, in their heart, they believe that there is a crime and we have to address those situations. That is the report for this month, and it's not even over yet, but, uh, that's a good one. Code enforcement, uh, I had the, um, Mr. Aguilar draw me up the, um, information regarding the Rosemary Lovato, Silvan family, and Mateus Teresa Franco, which has already been addressed. Uh, in that case, uh, no action has yet been taken for abatement. The other ones that I'm listing down here are past due. Marvin J. Watts, Pauline Lanford, Josie Felipe Torres, Renee Roman and Palma Oak Property and Akama, those are still pending. And they're past due as of October the seventh, twenty eighteen, for some type of abatement.
When you say they're pending and past due, that means that we've already sent the letter process, everything's been done?
Yeah, everything's been done up to that point.
We need to advertise and put it into the paper and get that on the agenda.
That is correct.
The other two, um, the other, so Mary, uh, what's her name? Rosemary? Yes, Lovato. So she, um, would no longer own the house, it belonged to the bank, but the bank hadn't recorded anything. So, uh, according to the county, she still owned it. She does not, she says she has nothing to do with the property, she doesn't want nothing to do with the property. I gave her a week to kind of, you know, see what she wanted to do. So that belongs to the bank, so anything that we do would be against that, so. Any questions for Chief?
So there hasn't been any interest in the, in the opening two jobs yet, or?
The interest that I've done is for the uncert, we did test, uh, several individuals for the uncertified. One of the candidates will be interviewed tomorrow on the oral board, and then once he passes the oral board interview, which will consist of the mayor, uh, town council, myself, and then an outside, I'm trying to get one of the sheriff's lieutenant or the undersheriff himself to come out. Once he passes the oral board and is recommended for, uh, approval, then it will be set to you all for the final approval for the uncertified position. The next academy date is January the twenty-ninth. All his backgrounds, documentations, medical, psychological, all that has to be done before January eleventh. Which is the deadline for admission to the academy. On the certified, we have done a lot of inquiries, but where they filtered out was on the pay. They, they were certified officers, but they felt the pay was too low, uh, based on their experience, because everybody throws that at you all, depending on experience. What do you start at for certified and how high do you go? So we have to, now that we're moving in that direction, now we have leverage. You can say, "This is our starting for certified, this is our ending top pay, this is the incentives we offer." So that's gonna generate some more, uh, people.
Well, one of the things that Chief Reyes implemented is testing, both written and physical tests, prior to any of all this stuff, because if the guy can't pass the written or, uh, physical test, he's not gonna pass it when he gets to the academy, so that's what's happening in the first place. It's, it's quite impressive actually, so we wanna implement that in all of our departments eventually.
The, the test, the test that Dennis is talking about is, is a national test. It's used by Santa Fe, Sandoval, uh, sheriffs are thinking about it. And it's used by the, mostly the northern agencies. And it tests reading, comprehension, grammar, it teaches the basics. It's designed for a person that is not a cop. Be able to pass this test with a seventy percent or better and be able to comprehend, because when he goes to the academy, they're gonna be bombarded with constitutional law and all, and they have to pass the poke test, which is a very long, uh, test in itself. The physical assessment was done. I give credit to a, a, an older gentleman that applied, he is from here, from Mountain Air. He made everything else, but he just could not pass that run. And that's where they kill all the applicants, is on that run, because by Cooper standards and Alié standards, you have to make a mile and a half run under fourteen fifty-four. If you do not do that, you're not gonna pass the academy, because each phase of the academy, they test you when you get in, they test you in the mid, and they test you exiting. And as you go through all these testing, you even get better. This gentleman was, he gave it all, let me tell you, I thought I was gonna have to call him a mess, but... He was good. He was good, he made everything else, but that, but he just could not pass the, the running. But he did apply to ACO. Well, I got a good candidate for an ACO position, because he is willing to do that. And, and his background is good.
And the certified, uh, are they coming from other municipalities or are they...
Uh, there's no certified officers because of the pay. But uncert, I had a good respond with uncertified. And out of the candidates that, uh, responded to the email, responded to the letters we sent out, was the final candidate that we're gonna interview tomorrow. And he's probably the best candidate, uh, on the written, physical, everything. Yeah, that, that's gonna be the standard for all certified, uh, uncertified. Is we implement these tests to determine, instead of wasting our money and time, if you can't pass a written and a, and a very basic test, you're not gonna get hired here. And eliminates our...
No question from the audience, I mean?
Audience?
So, um, you're talking about these positions that have been opened, these two positions, right? Is one of these for the school resource officer?
The school resource officer is, is, I've discussed with the mayor, um, on that, is that I would like to see the school resource officer be hired by the schools themselves, and then we commission him or her. They have to be certified officers and they have to have the training of SRO or be able to complete it, because it is a tough training. If I can convince the superintendent of the school to pay for the salary, then we can commit a full-time or part-time SRO to the program. Because right now what we're doing is if we, if we take that officer that is certified, not everybody is cut out to be an SRO, it's a special, it's a specialty. They might hate it, and some people just love it. By eliminating that and forcing it upon somebody else, I would propose whether to have a full-time or part-time SRO that's not our employee, only commissioned.
So you're talking about it being a, a school employee that the school is footing the entire bill for, but you commission them? So the agreement that the town and the school had to jointly pay for that is, is no longer there?
Well, we, well, we would just... It hasn't been made official.
Yeah, it hasn't been.
We're, we're in the...
It'll come to council, it'll come to council, well, I don't think we'll talk to Dawn and about, you know, the rule and...
So when are we planning on it coming to council, because we've been already a while without a school officer, and I've had several drug incidents occurring as we speak?
Well, the thing is, is that, uh, I have to meet with the superintendent, we have to meet with...
So we'll meet with the superintendent, but yeah, um, in the cases with drugs, we would just call regular PD.
Yes, yes, just call a regular officer and we'll deal with it. Uh, I do remember that, that you all wanted a canine to go through the, um, uh, schools to do a training, that's what I'm gonna call it, as a training exercise. I put out a word, uh, for Chief, for Setas of State Police, to see if I could borrow one of their canine dog units to come out and do a training exercise. Of course, if they find something that's different, but just for presence, because the county doesn't have a canine. SP is my, is my closest resource. So I am, I, I am working with that, because I think that would be a good deterrent for, uh, kids bringing in narcotics into the school.
So, uh, you said you have drugs up there. Are you calling a police officer when you suspect?
Right now it's been suspicion and we have not called a resource officer or a police officer.
Now, that's the thing, if, if you have a suspect, if you really believe, then you could still report it, you can still make a report, even though it's just suspicion, and we'll kind of, we'll take it in and, and use it as data. But if you actually have an offender, then yeah, you do have to make that call. And we'll, we'll handle it, and if we're not available, SO is, is very, has been very good to us. They know we're short, they're short too, but they told us that if we're not on duty and they, and somebody needs us here, they will respond.
Actually, this may be a dumb question. When you're an underage person, let's say fourteen, fifteen, and you have tobacco on you, I mean, obviously you're not close to an underage teen, can you get cited for that?
Yes, you have to be eighteen.
So then you'll probably get phone calls from me daily. That's no joke.
Yeah, no.
You can't cite, you can't cite that individual, because, uh, state law requires that you be eighteen to buy and purchase, uh, tobacco. Falls under USD.
And that may be a deterrent, instead of...
We will.
Yeah, they can be cited for it, absolutely. And then plus bringing tobacco on school, if you have a policy that prohibits tobacco and alcohol, drugs, you can enforce that. Because you do know that schools are considered, say, drug zones nationwide. Any person bringing narcotics, weapons into a s- school area zone can be charged federally.
What about chewing tobacco?
We'll leave you out of that. But yeah, any tobacco products on a, on a minor, yes, it is enforceable. Absolutely.
Under the age of eighteen, you're a minor, correct?
Yes.
That's how old you are to be my tobacco...
If mom and dad say, "I let him smoke," or, "You can do that at your house, but not on the school property." Absolutely.
Go ahead with Dawn, well, she's out, right?
She's out for the next two days.
Definitely. I think, I think it'd save us money, I think it'd be a win-win situation if we can get the school to do the SRO.
Well, the benefit of that also is the retirement.
The retirement, we can prove tired...